This evening, would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Rob Clark.
Here.
Mark Hamm.
All right, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask Danielle McKenzie if she would come up. We're going to present her with a plaque this evening, recognizing her for her service on the city council from 2016 through 2023. We appreciate your service and the joy of just getting to know you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to say something if you want.
Thank you all, it's been a pleasure to serve with you all. And it's also been a pleasure to watch you afterwards and kind of watch from the backside. So, thank you very much, I appreciate this.
Thank you Danielle.
Thank you Danielle.
All right, item two is the consent docket. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket, items A through F.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Yes.
Williams.
Item three, item passes. Item three, consider rezoning application number RZ 1044, located in the southwest quarter of Section Two Township 10 North Range Three West, being north of Northeast 27th Street and west of Pole Road from I-1 Light Industrial District to I-1 PU Light Industrial District with a permissive use for construction rentals and approved ordinance number 28-24, application by trade depoy, planning commission recommended approval 7-0. This is Ward Two.
Vice Mayor and Council, this site consists of approximately five acres. It is located east of North I-35 and north of Northeast 27th Street. There are currently two properties located at the site. There's the 501 Northeast 27th Street and the 2901 Pole Road. The property is developed as light industrial. The applicant is not proposing changes to the underlying uses, but is instead asking for a permissive use for construction, sales, and services heavy with a proposed use of operating a construction rental company for water pumps, water tanks, and related equipment at 501 Northeast 27th Street, as well as bringing an existing oil well services business located at 2901 Pole Road into compliance with the zoning code. The property is currently served by public water and sewer. Access is provided from Northeast 27th Street and Pole Road. Due to the age of these existing development, the stormwater detention is not provided. And because no new development is slated to occur, stormwater detention is not required at this time. The subject site is located in an area which has been industrial in nature for some time. The site at 501 Northeast 27th Street is currently being used by the applicant's business, but with smaller equipment that meets the definition of the I-1 zoning designation. Due to the type and size of construction equipment proposed to be stored on the property, the applicant is seeking the permissive use. The envision more 2040 plan calls for this location to be light industrial. Light industrial land uses include heavy commercial uses and light industrial development with a separation from residential areas. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the plan. Because this type of use is industrial in nature, an amendment to the comprehensive plan is not necessary. Permissive uses by definition are those that may not be appropriate in all areas within the underlying zoning due to potentially undesirable characteristics that affect sensitive uses. Each permissive use application should be viewed as unique and evaluated on their own individual merits. This area along Northeast 27th Street is emerging as an industrialized corridor. This application will maintain this trend with its industrial nature, as well as bring new and existing uses into compliance with the zoning code. Because the original development of the site focused the required landscaping on Northeast 27th Street to act as a buffer for the industrial uses, a permissive use of construction, sales, and services heavy is not anticipated to negatively affect the surrounding area. And staff recommends approval of this application contingent upon replacement of all dead trees and shrubs on the site. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you remind me, on a permissive use, if they leave the property and somebody else comes in, does that stay in place?
That is correct, yes.
And so, they are already a construction equipment rental company, but they're looking to lease larger pieces of equipment?
That's correct.
So, nothing with regard to scope to scope of their business will change, it's just the size of equipment?
That's correct.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Anyone that'd like to speak to the issue? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item four, consider the final plat of Eagle Lane duplexes located in the southwest quarter of Section 22 Township 10 North Range Three West, being north of Southwest 19th Street and east of Eagle Drive. Application by Omni Holdings LLC Joe Sherga, planning commission recommended approval 7-0. This one is Ward Three.
Vice Mayor and Council, this site is located north of Southwest 19th Street and east of Eagle Drive. It is approximately three acres in size with 10 lots being proposed in two common areas. That results in a density of approximately seven units per acre. The site is zoned R2 as a planned unit development. The approved PUD does grant reduced lot widths of 60 feet and a maximum coverage of 50% in exchange for the following amenities. A common area that does not include detention containing a minimum of 9,767 square feet, a total of 35 trees provided in the common areas, a approximately 200 square foot park shelter such as a pavilion with an eight-foot ADA picnic table and a six-foot bench, automatic irrigation system for all required landscaping, residential exterior aesthetics with a minimum of 70% brick, rock, or stone. Stormwater detention for this development is proposed in one of the common areas to the southwest of the site, and no portion of the property is located within a FEMA floodplain or floodway. Access is provided by Eagle Drive. The planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning application for the PUD and the preliminary plat for this addition, and the city council approved both items on June 5, 2023. The envision more 2040 plan calls for this location to be urban residential. Land uses in this designation include attached and detached residential units with densities of up to seven units per acre. The application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan. And with the land being designated as the urban residential, the preliminary plat does slightly increase the densities from the adjacent single-family developments while providing quality open space to offset those densities. There is a density proposed of seven lots per acre. That does meet the goal and policies of the comprehensive plan. Because the plat is in conformance with the approved preliminary plat, no amendment to the comprehensive plan is necessary, and staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, looked on the final plat as you presented it to us, I couldn't tell for sure, will there be fencing completely around the complex, or is it just the fencing that the houses will generate?
Yes, it's just the fencing that the houses, I'm sorry, the units would be fenced in from their neighbors, but it is not a gated community.
Okay, all right. And this is that property right behind that church, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Just curious, does the back of this property, the east side of the property, is that butt right up to the apartments?
It does, yes.
Okay, perfect. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Number five, consider adoption of resolution number 77-24, removing certain fees no longer being charged, providing for a fee for reasonable and direct costs associated with copying of records, updating fees previously modified by ordinance, updating the application fee in regards to the Board of Adjustments, and updating the commercial waste rates and the senior citizen rates for residential accounts effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, repealed, and repealing prior inconsistent fees.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is an update for our fee schedule. I try to do this about once every year, just to update the current fees that we have. The first fee that is changing is the public body is allowed to charge for the recovery of reasonable and direct costs in copying. Right now, we have a, spending a lot of time in redacting portions of our law enforcement body cams. They're time-sensitive, takes a long time to do those, and we're allowed to charge for that. So, we put down $25 an hour in doing the redactions on that. Earlier this year, we had an ordinance that changed the disposition or surplus of obsolete materials over $1,000 when bidding is required. This is just updating that that has already been approved before. The Board of Adjustment application fee will be changed from 250 to 500. And I also updated the commercial waste rates that hasn't been updated since 2021. So, you see that there are a lot of changes there as well. So, all of those are updated. We recommend approval of this.
And then, I see the senior citizen rate, and it says in here annual income of $33,088. I just point that out because I get a lot of calls from senior citizens, and they say it should be this amount, it should be this much. And I just wanted to point out that we update it annually based on the cost of the living adjustment, correct?
That is correct. Moving forward, yes, that is indicated in there. It is based on the January Consumer Price Index for the South Region as published by the U.S. Bureau of Statistics, and it'll be effective beginning in January of each year.
I just want to point out it's not-
It'll be automatically adjusted.
Right, it's not an arbitrary number, and we've actually-
That is correct.
So, well, on that number, it said at least $33,000?
At the minimum. Or, I'm sorry, that should be at the maximum. The annual income of $33,088 is the maximum amount, yes.
I think we need to fix the wording on that, if you would, because I was fixing to apply.
Okay. Well, we'll make that change.
I make a motion to approve.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call for the vote, please.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item six, consider adoption of resolution number 7824, adopting the scheduled fees and charges effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, or repealed, and repealing prior inconsistent fees.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is simply approving, ratifying the entire new fee schedule with these new changes that was just approved with the modification.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item seven, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of one Federal Signal 508-128 outdoor warning siren with solar power option, pole, freight, and installation from Federal Sign Safety and Security Systems in the amount of $32,286.70 utilizing Oklahoma State Contract Number SW 404F.
Mayor and Council, good evening. This would approve the purchase of siren number 44. You approved 43 here a couple of weeks ago, and actually, it arrived last week. So, we'll, we need to get that installed, but this would be number 44. It is part of our tenure plan to add sirens that will eventually replace some of our legacy sirens, which are over 50 years old, but still run great.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item eight, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of 76 body cameras and the associated software and accessories from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $212,803.40 using State Contract Number SW 1053M to be paid annually in the amount of $42,560.68 for a five-year period.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is upgrading of our body camera system. Our current system is 10 years old, it's reached end of life. We looked at several different vendors, and we decided to stay with the same system that we have, just take their newer product. It was cost savings, but also didn't sacrifice any uses or any quality of performance, so we recommend approval.
Is there anything unique about dividing the cost up across five years?
It's an easier budgetary for the city manager because he knows the fixed costs over the next five years when you're working on-
So, you don't get anything, there's no support or anything like that coming from Motorola or anything?
Motorola would probably prefer the lump sum payment, but they will support equally over the five-year payment.
Because it's exactly the same amount, so we're not paying any kind of a fee.
And it doesn't impact our, it doesn't impact our service from Motorola or quality.
Very good, thank you. Is this, is this replacing all that you need?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We currently carry the Vista camera. It will replace the Vista camera. There'll be some portions of the car, so it, because we're keeping the same company, we don't have to change out all the cameras, because there's three cameras in the car and then one camera on the officer. And so, this, we can just change out the camera and then one piece to the in-car camera systems. The 76 will provide us enough for SROs, officers working off-duty jobs, on-duty patrols with the overlap shifts, and detectives too that would be whereon when they go out.
Very nice.
Second.
Okay, who made the original?
Didn't I hear somebody?
The first.
I thought you did the first, yeah.
I seconded my motion. Is that possible? You're welcome.
Well, I'll make the motion.
Possible?
Okay, so I tried, sorry. Who's willing to second that?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Consider approval of the FY 24-25 contract with the Moore Public School District for the provision of eight uniformed school resource officers and one police vehicle for which the city will receive 65% reimbursement of the officer's salary and benefits and 65% of the cost of one vehicle in an amount not to exceed $624,329.21.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is our yearly contract with Moore Public Schools to provide SROs for the school system. Substantively, it has not changed at all this year. The price was adjusted for the cost of living increase or the merit increase through the collective bargaining unit with the union and the officers. That's the only change in the price. Provisionally, they have mentioned that maybe in next fiscal year, they would like to add another SRO to the contract, so it would increase to the number to nine, but this year, we're staying at eight. And again, substantively in the contract, nothing has changed other than the figures. Recommend approval.
Very good. And what schools, do we know what schools? I assume they're, I'm sorry.
This is a test.
No, no.
I cannot tell you the names of them off the top of my head. I could probably go down the list of names, sir, but generally speaking, two at each high school, sophomore and more high school, and then one at each junior high, and then there's a roving elementary. And so, a full-time roving elementary SRO. What they would like to do next year is have two roving elementary SROs and divide the elementary schools up.
Perfect. Do you know if Oklahoma City does something similar with the district that runs over there?
So, they also are at Westmore, and then they are at any junior highs that fall in Oklahoma City jurisdiction. I do not think they have a patrolling, a roving elementary SRO though.
Perfect, thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item 10, consider adopting resolution number 7924, supporting the appointment of Mark Hamm to the District Eight seat on the Board of Directors for the Oklahoma Municipal League, declaring said appointment to be for the benefit of the City of Moore and other municipalities within the district, and declaring the mission of the Oklahoma Municipal League to be the public purpose.
Vice Mayor, the district and council, the District Eight seat has come open again, and so, they're accepting applications. And I, you know, I always believe that it's good if the City of Moore participates and potentially has a seat on that board, so I support nominating Mayor Hamm for one of those positions.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item 11, consider authorizing the city manager to begin negotiations on the purchase of 8.3 acres west of Cleveland Heights.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the land that was discussed in the budget hearings and was a part of the $5 million financing that was approved by council in the last meeting. Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call for the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith.
Abstain.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 12 is the consent docket. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent docket sub-items A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item 13, consider adopting resolution number 26724, adopting the schedule of fees and charges effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, or repealed, and repealing prior inconsistent fees.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is simply the same fee schedule that the MPWA would need to ratify. It's the same one that was approved earlier tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. This time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 14 is the consent docket. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent docket A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item 15A is Citizens Forum for items not on the agenda. I don't have anybody that signed up. Would anybody like to speak? Okay, if not, items from the city council and trustees?
I'd like to, I'd just like to recognize the earlier this month, the Police Department and the Fire Department, first responders, did a training with the school district for school shootings. And they used teachers, faculty, staff, and even the students to help them in the training. And I was fortunate enough to be part of that and got an opportunity. I thought it was just a great thing that not only was it an eye-opener and a training for the schools and for those involved, but giving them the opportunity to train them in something that is very important in today's world. And I got a chance to see it, and it was neat to see the veteran police officers and firemen helping the younger ones, you know, the new ones, and just in their process and techniques that they need to be doing. And I just wanted to give them a shout-out. Appreciate everything that you guys do.
Here, here. Okay, anyone else? Items from the city or trust manager?
Just want to remind everyone that we'll have our firework show Thursday at Buck Thomas Park. It's one of the best shows in the state, so would encourage everyone to attend.
Very good. Okay, item 16 is executive session. Section 307 Title 25 Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss considering if deemed appropriate, take possible action regarding Mayor Mark Hamm and his potential dual office holding and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B1.
Make a motion, we convene to executive session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, we are convened to executive session. Available if needed. Okay.[1574.03] Available if needed. Okay.
On vacation.
Let the, man, I lost my focus there. Let the record show that everybody that was here before is still here. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to proceed as directed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Item seventeen is adjournment.
Somebody?
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.